Okay, call to order Wednesday, October twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. Planning Commission meeting, it is now six thirty four. Determination of quorum, Mr. Kenny.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Ray's.
Yeah.
Mr. Burke is excused tonight, Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. Studley is excused tonight, Secretary Anderson.
Here.
Vice Chair Kalunian.
Here.
Chairman Flynn is here, we have a quorum of seven. Emergency evacuation, doors you came out, go left to right. And if you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Just a quick announcement tonight, if there's anybody here, I don't see anybody or anybody on Zoom that is here for Westwood Estates. They have withdrawn their application and we're not taking any comment tonight. Thank you. Uh, approval of minutes. September twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five, entertain a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Kenny, you have a second?
Aye.
Second by Mr. Price, all those in favor, aye, any opposed, motion carries. Okay, bond reduction, where do we sit on that, Doug?
The applicant has asked for time to submit a response to the documentation that you all received. So we're going to table the matter for now. It does not require a vote to continue because these are non noticed matters. So all it is is just an acknowledgement that we'll table this to a future meeting once we have the response.
Okay, well, we'll table this bond reduction at a future meeting if needed. Okay, going right over to number eight. Eleven sixty Main Street Garage, public hearing, preliminary plan, minor land development with associated use variance. Owner applicant Alexander Davis Junior PH Properties Diaz LLC. AP forty five lot fifty three zone general business. Eleven sixteen Main Street applicant proposes to construct a six hundred and sixty nine square foot addition to existing twelve sixty square foot automotive repair. On a point two six acre parcel, minor land development application is required because the addition requests a new commercial square footage under seventy five hundred square feet. A use variance is required because the used general automotive repair automotive body shop is not currently permitted in a general business zone. This project will be reviewed under unified development review in which both the minor land development and the usage variance will decide by a planning commission. So we will need two motions on this project. Name and address.
Mr. Chairman Thomas Cronin, Nolan Bernero Cronin for our ten seventy Main Street Coventry, Rhode Island for the owner and applicant. Uh, Mr. Diaz is with me here tonight. So this is a, as the chairman noted, both minor development and use variance. I'm going to focus on the use variance as the minor development is a six hundred and ninety nine square foot addition to an existing garage and truly minor. The um, so diversified auto is the business that's located at the corner of Main Street and South Main Street here in town. You know, it's probably the least inconspicuous project I've ever brought before you. If you haven't driven by it, then I don't know how you get around town. But uh, it's right there on the corner and you'll note that it's on both sides of the South Main Street there. So we're talking about the southern side of South Main Street. Um, not on the Garland side, so to speak. Uh, that's the location. So it's across the street from Dave's Plaza, there's the barber shop next door. And then the other diversified auto across South Main Street. But you know, most importantly, the Patuxa River runs directly behind the building. And about a third of this lot is that riverbank that goes back behind the paved area. So I mean, as uh, as you can see when you drive by, all the, all of the flat area is in fact paved and has an existing building on it. And there's a chain link fence, you know, to keep the cars and the folks from rolling down the hill into the river. So the um, that building's been there since about the nineteen sixties. I traced it back to nineteen sixty seven, originally a gas station and since then always been used for some kind of.
Gas.
Yeah, automotive uh, use. Uh, for a while Joe Appolonio owned it before Alex owned it, you know, so it's, it's always just been that. Um, you know, as this board is aware, you're very practical people, you know, that those kind of properties come with some environmental concerns on the open real estate market. Which kind of limits what one can do with the building, right? So once it's an auto shop, it's pretty much always an auto shop. There's no, there's not too many alternatives there. And you see plenty of these empty properties around town that used to be gas stations that just kind of sit there. So what we're looking to do is add six hundred and ninety nine square feet, one bay to the garage, to the right of the existing garage as you look at it. The bays is going to be slightly angled to the existing building, so it squares up with South Main Street. So that's going to allow for a little more ease of use in the parking area. So the traffic, pedestrian and vehicular is going to remain the same. So no new curb cuts in Main Street, utilities will be the same. One area I just wanted to just review just briefly, there's some divergence in the technical review report and our application. In that this building has an OWTS, has a septic system. If you're looking at the building, it's to the right side of that building. It's been there for, for some time, it's in good shape. Um, for some reason, the technical review committee spoke of a sewer, just, just an oversight, I think. But definitely want to address it, that's the, um, the building has public water, you know, all the utilities right off of Main Street. Um, the technical review committee did come up with a couple of decent suggestions regarding putting some parking blocks. To separate the parking from the employee and customer automobiles and the sidewalks on South Main Street and Main Street. And my client, you know, agrees that that's a good concept to keep somebody from overdrive in there. So uh, use variance, as this board is learning under this new unified development plan review. Has a, you know, pretty high standard that this property would have no other beneficial use in addition to the usual standards. This, this is a, a property in a unique place, right? So back in February of two thousand twenty five, the planning staff put in a change of zone. Um, recommendation to the town council to add auto repair to the general business zone with some conditions. I simultaneously, you know, just coincidence, put in an application to change the zone of this lot. Uh, just to allow for general automobile repair. And both the planning staffs and my application remain in somebody's inbox to this day. So we uh, we took a turn and we applied for this use variance. So in terms of the, the use variance, this use automobile repair fits with the comprehensive plan, the land use element of the comprehensive plan. It's a preexisting nonconforming use there since the sixties and in no way will it change the status of this property in the town or interfere with the use of any property around it. Um, given its history, it doesn't have any other beneficial use. And in order for this business to continue to thrive, we need to add that additional garage. So I don't have too much more to say about this, it's a, it's a pretty small lot with one building on it. I, even I can't go on and on for too long about this one.
I, I just have one comment, I'd like to thank the applicant for doing business in Coventry and expanding his business in Coventry. And apologize that it took you so long to get here. Cause it didn't sit in our queue for long. Thank you, anybody else?
Good point, thanks.
Uh, Mr. Cronin, the, the septic system you said, not a sewer? I just want to get that.
Septic system.
So you're going to plan on continuing to use that?
Well, until, until it, you know, until it fails, you know what the rules are, we have to kind of.
No, is it located under the asphalt?
It is not.
Oh.
So between the barber shop and the uh, structure.
Okay, I thought you said to the.
I was going to say a grassy area, that would.
No, I know exactly where it is, I, I, I thought you said to the right. And the other thing I just want to get clarified because the planning director's report in two places has it as six hundred and sixty nine square feet. And your application, you just said six ninety nine, and I can't quite read on this small print what it is.
I uh, you know.
For the record, just let's clarify it now so we don't approve something that's uh.
Sure.
Correct.
I don't, I don't know how you become a planner, but you become a lawyer when you can't do math. So uh, let's see what I have.
You got it, Max, fine class.
Aish, yeah. Sam Swassa, he's young, he's, he's, uh, he's doing us dirty, yeah.
Doug might have a full site.
So our staff report and, and the agenda votes say six sixty nine square feet.
Doug's got some plans he's looking at right now.
Who's got the best eyes?
Yeah, I tried. He's the man, yeah.
For the record, the site plan, which should be the most accurate, does say six nine nine. So why don't we take this moment and say for the record, the applicant is seeking a, a minor land development use variance for an addition six nine nine. Agenda staff report should be amended to reflect that. But for right now, for the purposes of our decision, we'll work with that. Good catch, Rick, thank you.
Well, the staff report and the, and the agenda does state six sixty nine.
No, no, we're looking at six nine nine.
Oh, six nine nine.
Is the correct number. So that's a good catch.
So we'll make sure that's in both motions.
Yep.
Good catch, Rick.
That's it.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll uh, this is a public hearing. I'll make a motion to open up public hearing.
Make a motion, we open public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Kenny, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there anybody in the room with like to come up for or against this project? Hearing none, seen none, anybody on Zoom? No, raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Yeah, entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Make a motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Kenny, all those in favor? Aye, any opposed, motion carries. Okay, I'll uh, entertain a motion to go for the variance first, this is a two motion.
Yep. I just want to make sure there's no condition in here that conflict with that septic system issue, I don't see any. Yeah, what'd you say, Mr. Chairman?
If you could do the motion for the variance first.
Variance. Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a uh, make a motion to approve the variance request for eleven sixty Main Street. To Cecil's Platte forty five lot fifty three in the general business zone. Uh, to allow for the construction of the six hundred and ninety nine square foot plus or minus addition to the existing automotive repair garage at that location. And I would also like to incorporate the staff report with that adjustment to six hundred and ninety nine square feet rather than six hundred and sixty nine square feet. And I also just want to include into the motion that there will not be a sewer connection required at this time.
Jim, I just want to make a note, for purpose of the variance, um, the request is to allow the use in a general business zone.
You are correct.
As stated in the report, correct?
Okay, I got carried away, so it was to uh, included in that motion is to allow the use for the, the automotive use in the general business zone.
Yeah, I have a motion by Mr. Kalunian.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Smith, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
I got sustained from this, I live around the corner, so I didn't get no paperwork.
Okay.
I want to sustain from this.
Okay.
All right.
You're recusing. You recuse yourself from this vote?
Yeah, so just. I didn't get no paperwork, but I, I'm only around the corner, so I should have got some paperwork on this, but then.
Yeah, I don't know if you're in a butter though.
Oh.
I don't know if you're in a butter too.
Oh, you're saying you didn't get in a butter mailing?
Yes, I'm, I'm on Bank Street, I'm right behind Garland.
It could be that you're, it's, sometimes it's tight, it could be that you're just beyond the radius. But either way, if you feel that it's, if you feel like it's, it's close enough to you. Um, and don't think it's a big issue for you to recuse in an abundance of caution, but let's, let's just suggest that you're recusing because you think you are in some proximity to the site.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. All right, I have a, where was I, I have a motion. And I have a second. And I have a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, now I'm going to entertain a motion for the project itself, for the preliminary minor land development.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a favorable motion for project name eleven sixteen Main Street Garage. Um, assessors plot forty five lot fifty three, zone general business. Um, applicant proposes to construct a six ninety nine square foot addition to the existing twelve hundred sixty square foot automotive repair garage. On a point two six acre. And that's it, I'd like to include the staff report with my motion. And with the note that it is a six ninety nine square foot addition, not a six six nine.
I have a motion by Mr. Kenny to have a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Smith, any discussion? Uh, one, do, does this go right to final or do they have to request final?
Um, this does have a, a final stage. Um, and if you want for the record, you can make it clean and clear that it final will be handled administratively.
If that's what.
To be honest, we always assume it unless you see something in the record. It's assumed final can be handled administratively unless the board sees fit otherwise, so.
Okay.
Um, dude, I don't think you need to make it part of the motion, but it's just worth noting, yeah. And I think final plan will be pretty quick here, it's basically the same plans that we have. So, and you have state permits already in hand, is that correct, Mr. Cronin? So they have state permits in hand, I, I bet they're going to be submitting final plan to my office very shortly. Um, and it's really just a matter of getting this on record, a plan to uh, check the box and get it on record.
Any other discussion? Good, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, good luck. Okay, next we have the woods at Redbrook, phase three, public informational meeting, final plan, major land development, owner offshore development LLC. Applicant Redbooks, Redbrook Builders, AP twenty four lot one twenty five, zone R twenty. Redbrook Lane applicant proposes to construct a thirty six unit multifamily project on eight point three four acres of land. Which five units will be designated as affordable. This project will be heard before the planning commission for final plan approval to consider minor versions of preliminary plan conditions of approval. Anybody here representing applicant, name and address, please?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, for the record. My name is Jeff Caffrey, I'm an attorney with Resnick and Caffrey, three hundred cent of the road in Wallack. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and the owner. Um, as you indicated in your introduction, we're here for final approval. Um, we had originally received, believe it or not, master plan dates back to November of two thousand and seven on this project. And had received preliminary approval back in July of two thousand and twenty one. At the time of preliminary approval, there were a couple of conditions that were put as part of the, the approval. Uh, several of which were based upon the recommendations from the town of West Wallack. Two of the stipulations were that we confer with the West Wallack Fire Marshal for public safety slash emergency response issues related to the development. And the other was that uh, our traffic report that was done by Bennett had recommended the installation of a warning sign of potential turning vehicles on New London Turnpike. Uh, so since that time, we've tried on numerous occasions, and there's a letter to that effect in the record from John Mulhern, one of the principals. We've tried on a number of occasions to work with the town of West Wallack. Uh, we did receive an email from the, uh, one of the representatives of the fire department, actually. It was Lieutenant Joseph Hool, uh, addressing the issue regarding the safety concerns and fire. Uh, that was submitted as part of the record as well, basically saying that they were going to defer to the town of Coventry and that they were available to assist if need be. And I think that probably should satisfy condition number two as part of the preliminary approval. Uh, the real sticking point is the, our inability to get a sign posted anywhere in the town of West Wallack. According to the West Wallack Town Council, apparently that has to go before them, uh, before they would agree to, to approve that. So uh, we're of the opinion that's a relatively minor modification to the preliminary that was given. So that's the primary reason why we're here tonight, not proceeding administratively. I, I, I would note in addition that I reviewed the staff comments that were provided to me and, and Doug and I kind of spoke on those. The only thing that I think has changed, and I didn't have a chance to address with Doug, is that there was a recent modification on the approval from sewer. And that the grinder pumps, pumps are going to be per building and not per unit. I didn't, in your, in your recommendation, I think it was on a per unit basis. But as of October seventh, there was another approval that was granted that said it would apply on a per building basis.
I'm fine with that, but is that in the, the uh, conditions or do you know where that's addressed?
That was, that was in your staff report.
Just somewhere in the body of the report?
Yes, yes, that was one, one grinder pump per unit as opposed to per building.
That's fine, I think that's good to correct the record, but we don't need to amend the decision that you, you noted at all, right?
And, and the other stipulations that were raised in, in the, in the staff's recommendation were fine, I think you're going to make one notation.
There is, yeah, and, and I'm going to find the specific language, uh, so you, you can continue, but when we get to that point, when we're ready for a motion, I'll have that stipulation ready.
That, that actually is, that's pretty much the extent of my presentation, I think it's a, you know, a pretty minor amendment to the preliminary decision. And hopefully we can get final approval and, and move on with the project.
Well, it's very hard to get a condition of approval that somebody won't give you.
Yeah, you read my mind, it's like, we did try and, and.
I have nothing, does anybody on the board have anything?
I'd just like to get, what, what was it about this? This, the sewer grinder, did you say per building or per unit?
Yes, the grinder pumps originally as part of the staff report had indicated that it would be one grinder, grinder unit per unit. Um, but there was a recent amendment that said we could do it per building.
Okay, so you're going to be doing it per building?
Per building, correct.
I just want to make sure if we're going to incorporate the staff report that we accept that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair.
And the, and the waivers, uh, Doug, this maybe for you, the, nothing's changed, the waivers are all the same from, we approved those at preliminary last time, I believe? In twenty one?
Waivers wouldn't change, once you, once you provide waivers, that you've, you've waived it.
Um, so any waivers you provided at prelim are set. Um, this is an odd duck because of the fact that, um, West Warwick recommended certain things be done. Planning, uh, planning and Coventry said, sure, we're happy to make that part of our decision. And then it turned out the West Warwick staff didn't agree with the West Warwick planning board and the way they wanted to handle it. But this applicant got stuck because Coventry couldn't resolve that matter. We had conditions of approval that couldn't be met. Um, I think the applicant has been in touch and we've had a lot of back and forth. Uh, and they, they've made a really good faith effort to try to pursue that, um, the, you know, the, basically the compliance with the condition. It just could not be met, it's a fairly minor issue in my mind, but we felt like it was important to bring it back for the board. If we're removing a condition of approval that the planning commission added, I think it's more appropriate for the planning commission to be the agency to determine whether that was an appropriate removal or not, so that, um, that's why it's here, it's really more of like a perfunctory kind of role to make sure you guys are comfortable, no one had an issue. It's, to me, it's a minor signage issue, um, it was not a critical issue to this project. Um, that, that's my note, and then I do have one note on the language that we have for the conditions of approval. I'm uh, gonna find it here. Um, so, um, as you might notice, the language that you see in the conditions of approval carry with it a very detailed layout of the inspections process. And this language should look pretty familiar, this is basically a template that was created in another project. And we think this is a fairly good template in terms of the back and forth and the balance between what the town engineer will need and what the applicant can provide in, in a fair way. Um, there's one item where it's in condition number six. I'd like to add to the, um, let me see, I'm going to make sure I got the right paragraph. Uh, it's completed. I'm looking for that word approval in here.
So we're adding a condition?
You're not going to add a condition, you're going to add a sentence.
Okay.
To uh, this, so each grimace. Actually, unit. Okay, so at the end of condition number six, this condition describes the, uh, the state of which the town engineer will consider the approval of a certificate of conformance. And um, we had a footnote in our other decision for the other project that defined what an approval means. So I'd like for this sentence to be added, word for word, at the end of condition number six. sentence to be added word for word at the end of condition number six. The term approval in this paragraph shall mean confirmation that the COC complies with the requirements set forth in paragraph four E. That is basically making this consistent with the approach we had on the other project, but that footnote fell off when we brought these conditions over. Does that sound accurate to you, Mr. Caffrey?
That's correct.
Yeah, you're okay with that?
I, I'm fine with that, yes. That, that's fine.
What was it, Doug? The term of the approval shall mean?
Uh, the language was the term approval in this paragraph shall mean confirmation that the COC complies with the requirements set forth in paragraph four E.
COC, I'm sorry, I'm up to, shall mean confirmation that the COC conforms?
That the COC complies.
Complies.
With the requirements set forth in paragraph four E.
Okay.
And when you make the motion, you can just say as amended, uh, amended as discussed.
Well, our agenda still states taking public comment.
Oh, yeah, that, that's fine.
I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience like to comment on this project? Is there anybody on Zoom? Raise your hand.
No Zoom.
Okay. I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the final plan of offshore development. Um, owner applicant Redbrook Builders, uh, for assessors plat twenty-four lot one twenty-five in the R twenty zone. For the, uh, approval of a development that consists of thirty-six multifamily residential uh, units spread over eight buildings accessed by a twenty-four foot paved right of way. I would like to include, uh, the staff report. Noting that the original preliminary plan decision included two stipulations that were unattainable. And accepting the email with regard to the West Warwick Fire Marshal and, uh, relieving the applicant of the need to install the, uh, a warning sign for turning vehicles. Um, I would like to incorporate the staff report, um, which I know I just said, but I would also just like to make sure that it's clear that the, uh, each building will be serviced by an environmental one grinder pump to discharge sewage to the force main, not each unit. And I would also like to, uh, include the language that just Doug just stipulated to the end of paragraph six stating that the term approval shall mean the confirmation that the COC complies with the requirements set forth in paragraph four E.
Very good. I have a motion by Mr. Colonian. Second? Second by Mr. Price. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck. Okay, we're at director's report.
We're zipping right through. Um, let me see how I did it. Uh, yeah, actually Dennis, if you don't mind handing that out.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, first, let's, uh, go over a couple of schedule considerations. Um, we might as well do this now and we are allowed to take a vote on this because of the way that it's framed on the agenda, but this is the proposed schedule for the planning commission for the calendar year two thousand twenty-six. This is something that every year we have to post to Secretary of State. Uh, we're a little early doing it now, but we might as well. The dates aren't going to change. Is there anybody that sees any conflicts? Uh, we basically do the same thing. It's the fourth Wednesday, except if there's a holiday. So we basically, uh, change November and December a little bit to avoid the holidays. Other than that, um, it is a standard fourth Wednesday. Um, what I'd ask for on this one is if you don't mind, uh, taking a vote to, um, authorize the, the filing of this, uh, proposed schedule, uh, to the Secretary of State.
I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the Coventry Planning Commission two thousand twenty-six meeting schedule and, uh, that will be done to the Secretary of State as stated.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the twenty twenty-six meeting schedule as presented by the Director for the Coventry Planning Commission.
I have a motion by Mr. Smith, second. Second by Mr. Ray. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Great. Um, a couple other schedule considerations. Uh, as, as members are aware, without naming any particular projects or discussing any particular projects, we're going to have a, a larger scale project coming in front of us in the near future. Uh, that project's going to require us to have, um, at least one, and I envision, um, two meetings at the high school. That will take place at our next regular meeting, November nineteenth will be at the high school. And we're making arrangements so that these meetings at the high school, we can focus solely on one large scale project. We don't have to uh, divide and conquer and have multiple applicants there. If we had anything else to that agenda, it should be something that takes five minutes or less. Um, the idea is also, uh, we, we anticipate that that might require multiple meetings, so we're already getting ahead of it for December. Our normal meeting night in December is not available for the high school. The next night is, and we've already made arrangements and the high school has the room available. And as you guys received an email from me, I kind of put that on your radar. So December's meeting, the, uh, the high school meeting will be December eighteenth. As we've been doing this, we're recognizing there's a few matters that are starting to come in front of us that will require another meeting in December for us to handle regular business. So we can do regular business and then have a separate meeting to do the large project. Regular business, the best night to do it is actually your normal standing night in December, which is the seventeenth. So this is going to push you guys a bit. If you can are willing to do back to, back to back meetings, one night after the other, it's a lot more, um, effective and efficient for staff because we can use the normal cadence of our TRC meetings and still be prepping you guys with packets for those two meetings very effectively. Um.
Now, will the seventeenth be here?
The seventeenth will be here. That's basically to catch all the normal business that we have. And the eighteenth will be at the high school and that's going to be dedicated to the large meeting or to the large project.
Is that the high school?
The nineteenth, it said, November nineteenth is at the high school, December eighteenth is at the high school. Then December seventeenth is here.
Okay.
Um, and then as you may be aware, we're still, um, thinking about the possibility for a, a, a third special meeting, which would occur at the high school. It's not clear if we'll need that at all. I think many of you had given feedback. We were kicking around the dates of December, uh, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, or January fifth or sixth. That's just so we're getting ahead of it and making sure the high school's available if we need to continue to a date certain after our, after our December meetings. Um, I know some people got back via email. Did anyone have anything they wanted to say about that extra meeting? I do appreciate it. We're pushing you guys a little bit because this is a busy, uh, time. We've got a busy project that I think is gonna, uh, need its own meetings. Uh, so, you know, I appreciate that there, there might be, uh, you know, three meetings that you guys would have within a three week period. So that, that's, that's busy. I appreciate your time and your commitment to the town. Um, if anybody else is getting real sick of these, uh, extra meetings, just let me know. Um, you know, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll find a way to recuse you, right? Um, that's correct. Yeah, we, we, we don't need a special meeting in November. As we're starting to real, uh, read the, the pacing of business coming in front of the town, the only, we only need one meeting to handle regular business between November and December. And when I say regular meeting, what I mean is one meeting dedicated to other matters aside from the large project that we expect. So that regular meeting for regular business is going to be December seventeenth. The large project is going to get dedicated, the November nineteenth and December eighteenth.
November ninth, nineteenth, there will be light agenda as far as other things except for this lodge.
Yeah.
Application.
If anything else wants to be on that agenda, or there's an urgent need to address something, it better be five minutes or less, or else we're going to, you know, say, suggest they need to wait until December. Um, and then we'll just kind of see how this moves along. Um, I'm thinking if there was any other s- meeting scheduling, Dennis, can, can you think of anything that I missed in there? All right, um. So, uh, the next thing, this is a, this is a bit of a unique thing to bring up to you. Um, David, do you have this letter? Yeah, this is a unique item that I'm bringing to your attention. I don't want to take long. Uh, we're going to have busy enough meetings coming up. We'll keep this one short. Do you guys, uh, you all got this in your packets? It's a, it's a letter. Uh, this letter, let's just say it's not ascribed to any particular project at this moment. It's just, this is a letter. It, it does give you an idea of, uh, something that's coming our way. I want you to look at the letter and, and then you see that the staff notes on the letter are all in blue. And, but basically if you read the letter, just looking at the black ink, I want you to take note of the way it was organized, the way it was structured, the way that it's presented, the way it's written. Does anyone have a guess on how a letter like this was likely created? Artificial intelligence. This I'm seeing much more frequently now. Um, we, as you can tell in the staff notes, we took two hours and we took the time to go through all of the directions this letter wanted to head. We found all the citations it made and we debunked pretty much the entire letter. You know, there's a few concepts that, you know, loose concepts that might have some merit, but it points at all these directions. It points you to code. When you look at the details and when you look what's behind the curtain, it's a house of cards. It points to code that doesn't exist. It points to code, there might be a sentence that seems relevant, but it's in a section of code that's not pertinent to the given project. This is what AI is capable of doing. It's capable of, you can tell AI, please go to this town website. Please review the documents. Please create an opposition letter to a project. And please cite any relevant code that you see. And AI goes out and it reviews all the project materials and it reviews all the areas on the web and it comes back. And AI will always do what you ask it to. It doesn't fact check itself, but it will present compelling, well-written, well-presented, well-organized arguments that on the surface look like they're very damning. However, underneath the surface, it can take hours to debunk these things. You, you'll start, you may see more of these as we move forward, and I'm not going to ascribe any individual project will get more or less, but intensive projects with intensive of butter comments, you might start to see them. You can start to pick up on how AI writes. It likes to write in ways that it's like kind of bold language. Uh, it likes to add numbers. It likes to write in certain ways. It's always well organized. That doesn't mean the ideas are correct. Here's my suggestion to the group, because we might get on any given project many letters that may look like this. And they may look like, man, we need to debunk every letter. To be quite frank, this, in my opinion, is a letter that took someone two minutes to write because it took them two minutes to tell AI to write it. This particular is a good example because the person didn't add a name. They didn't want to identify themselves. They identified themselves uh, with an email address. I emailed this back to say, oh, I'm just curious to know if you, you know, if you have a, a name or an address you want to ascribe to this. I never got an email back. The email was probably written just for this one email. So we won't throw out public comments ever. We're not going to ever dispute that, uh, any, any input that we receive. There's no such thing as saying we're going to, we're going to dismiss this and not allow this as a comment. But what we do need to be is conscious of staff time and your attention to where there are critical matters that warrant your attention. And pouring through and honestly, someone could have taken three seconds and told AI, make this a ten-page letter, and AI would have done it and it would have gotten more ludicrous with the areas that it reached to, to find arguments, and it would have looked very well organized, very well presented, and it would have been just as strong in an argument. It would have just been ten pages of it. And that's what AI is capable of doing. Someone types in two seconds of instructions and AI can print a ten-page report for you. Now, my guidance is that staff are going to review all comments we get. When staff review a comment and we see there's a lot of legitimacy behind a comment, behind something that's challenging us, that, that we're, we need to look at certain code. We need to look at a certain concept. We need to look at something specifically. When we get that, staff is going to identify that in our staff report. I want you to know that when you, if there's a project where you get many comments that look like this, the legitimate points that are worthy of addressing are going to be addressed in the staff report. So if you, we pick it up on the staff report and we say there were some legitimate questions or legit, and I, and I don't mean to say legitimate or illegitimate, but questions that were worthy of addressing in the staff report, we will do. And I want you to be aware, if you happen to get on any given project, uh, an inch of public comments, many of them may look like this. Look to the staff report, look to how it assesses the issues that are being brought in front of us through public comments and how we address them. That could be your best guide. Um, these things can be a big time suck. It'll be a time suck for staff to try to debunk each one individually. It would be a time suck for the commission to try to look at each one individually. But this is, I think, the, the new era. This is probably, AI is a very easy tool and it fits perfectly with what someone might wish to do, which is there's information that's above my head. I don't wish to get fully up to speed on it. I'd like to just make some sort of quick opposition comment, but I want it to have as much teeth and look as intimidating as possible. AI is a great tool for that. So I think that as this becomes more ingrained or embedded into people's, uh, process and abilities, we're going to see more letters like this. Um, that's just, wanted to give you guys without any specific project and without a big crowd in front of us for any given meeting, I just wanted to give you that background. Um, David, do you have any thoughts on any of that?
So even if that, even if it's anonymous, we still take it to record?
Everything we get.
Name on it?
Everything we get that's addressed to the planning commission is going to make its way to you. If it doesn't have a name, that doesn't invalidate it as a comment we've received. Uh, i- if it's not factually true, that doesn't invalidate it as a comment we've received. In fact, we get into trouble when we start trying to pick and choose what comments should make it to you and what should not. We should give everything to you, but you should be given the wherewithal. If it's worth your time and attention, you'll see it addressed in the staff report.
I have to kind of go back on that because that was my point. This is not an open records request, which we know can be submitted with an email address. You don't have to identify yourself. A letter to the editor requires you to provide your name and address so it can be verifiable where it came from, not the content. I agree with that. But letters that come to us, and I appreciate you'll forward them all to us. But we should almost have a policy that says if the letter is unsigned, it doesn't have the person's contact information and it can't be verified as something that was submitted by a real individual. Forget the content. Not that we would dismiss it, but it's certainly not going to carry the weight of a person that stands at that podium and addresses their name or submits something in writing and puts their name and address down. I, I just think that's a, it's a, it's a dangerous road to get down to even consider. It's nice to read through it and I appreciate what you just said about us making sure we can kind of tell the difference. But I'm not putting a whole heck of a lot of stock. And I don't care if it's twen- a twenty-page report, if it's unsigned and we have no idea where it came from.
That, that's a good point.
AI or not.
Yeah.
Anybody can, can make stuff up.
Yeah, and, and, and not only AI or not, I, to be honest, uh, this particular one is a great example to use because there, there wasn't a personal identification provided. It was literally something provided for, and this was not addressed to the planning commission. So this was a good example for me to use because it was very clear. I tried to communicate back with this email address, no, no response. So it became clear, there's not, someone did create this, but they had no desire to want to be connected to it. That doesn't change the fact that a butters will give comments that will utilize AI and they will sign their name to it, but that does not mean that they took full stock of the comment that they just sent. Um, and I do think what you just suggested, Rick, is it's all about how the board waits it. But I, there's not going to be a formal policy. Uh, we're not going to create anything that says, you know, this is what we consider more important or less important. All the content from the abutters or lay content is going to be accepted. Now, the board certainly should make its own judgment on where you think there's weight and worth of your attention. And I do agree, you're going to know it when you see it. You know, you guys are going to have potentially many letters that you're going to have to look at. I would never guide you to not look at the comments that come to you, but certainly give the weight, use your heads, give the weight where you see it. And staff will help guide you. If there's something that we think needs to be picked up, someone says a comment and we like, oh, they. someone says a comment and we like, oh, that is a true point. There is a, there is an issue with that regulation. Staff will address it in our report. So that way you don't have to pour through wondering, you know, what's behind the curtain on all of these references to all these various sections of code. So I just, I want to, I want to give you guys that, not for any particular project, but there might be projects where you're going to get multiple comments that will look like this and they'll say a thousand different things, but it'll have a similar feel, format, approach. I'm seeing this more and more frequently across the state in many different communities. It's becoming a more prevalent issue. And it's taking a lot of staff time for people to debunk these things. Yeah, James.
Can we establish a policy that any comments coming into the planning pack to have a valid email address and signature or point of contact for the comment?
I think that's dangerous, to be honest. I don't know, David.
I would have to do some research, but the, I think we're getting a little in the weeds because I think anybody who's in a butter has legal standing to challenge a project. And I have. So so let's just, that category of people. So if I'm in a butter and I generate a twenty-five page one of these, somebody's going to have to debunk it because I'm going to go up there and I'm going to talk about it. And it's, and I think a butter gets treated as a whole different category because they have legal standing and theoretically they are going to put their name on it. They did get in the mail and they are going to be here, an active butter. So I think that's going to be an easy cut for you to make. You got an active participating butter. Once you get beyond the butters, if they're not here, they're not, they're not, I mean, if staff doesn't recognize it, you could say we acknowledge comments, but we're not giving it any weight. I would kind of do it on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
I I think an active participating butter is going to be the person that will either have a legitimate claim or try this kind of thing. And if they try this kind of thing, I think the staff has to wade through it and because we have to, you're going to have to address that.
We deal with those at every meeting. We have, we have a butters that come up and 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 say things that may or may not be factually correct and we have to weigh that against the experts and our own knowledge and what we hear in the planning.
That's the danger. To me, that's the biggest risk you have. If you want to diminish the value of other non-butters who don't participate and inundate you with a stack of paper, theoretically, you can, you can take it in and say, yep, we got a stack of paper here and staff noted it and we're not going to give it a lot of weight. Doesn't appear to be assigned to it. But I mean, you can, you could kind of just almost disregard it. But I wouldn't make it a policy to disregard it. Does that make sense?
You can't. And I appreciate Doug's position because if he doesn't share what he gets and says, oh, this is fictitious, then he's at risk.
That's right.
So he has to give it to us. He's just telling us.
You're right, though.
And we don't even know if it's a town resident.
Right. That's what, that's what I'm getting at. That's my whole point. My whole point is, I feel very comfortable with you pushing non-identifiable information, raising all kinds of arguments from somebody who's not here, not participating, unwilling to be identified. I almost don't care if you say we acknowledge it and we acknowledge it and never look at it. I really don't have a problem with that. Active participating about is they want to use AI, we're going to have to wrestle that beast.
And I, I agree with your point, Jim.
Yeah, I understand Jim's point. They don't, but if it's, if it's not, David Leozzi's not in a butter, but he lives down the block and.
And he puts his name on it?
But put the name on it.
We're going to have to deal with it.
Yes, put the name on it.
Absolutely.
But what Jim's saying is if David's going to do this through AI and he lives a half a mile down the road, he doesn't put his name on it.
Or another state.
Or another state.
You don't even know.
Again, I think unidentifiable, okay, let's, three categories, right? Active participating about is who use AI, got to deal with it, right? They're active, but. Non-active participating about is who may be in town, but are using AI and don't want to participate, don't want to be identified. Well, we don't even know. They don't, again, they're the same as somebody that's in another state.
How do you know if they're in town or not, if they don't identify?
That's what I'm saying. We're not going to know. That's going to be part of the whole category. It's going to be one of these. It'll be one of these.
I mean, to be honest, I think the idea is that we're not going to separate and filter comments that reach you. You're going to get all the comments and that's the safest bet. That makes sure that anybody that would claim that you should be advised of something, you were advised of everything. You had all the information at your fingertips, but you're going to be overwhelmed with information. And I mean, even, and David said this and I hear what he's saying, an active participating a butter can still use AI. An active participating a butter can be use AI, fact-check it, be very accurate, make themselves smarter and have great comments and we'll be ready to go through comment by comment. Should we, you know, how should we address this? What's the issue here? Also, active participating a butters can ask AI to generate a ten-page report and it might look like this, but they put their name at the bottom. Look to the staff report because the staff report's going to tell you and focus on where's their legitimacy and where did we pick up on issues and where could we, you know, pull those issues from all of the butters' letters into your consideration and that'll highlight the most important things. If it's not highlighted there, even if they're an active participant in a butter, it could be that many of the points they raised may not have been as factually accurate as they would have liked. But, you know, what we can't do is we can't take every butter comment and do what we did here. This was meant as an example of what it looks like when you peel back the curtain. It wasn't meant to be, this is what staff will do with all comments because sometimes we can identify it. We'll do a little bit of fact checking to the degree we can, but we don't need to create a work product for you to see. Now that a butter might come and I'd like to understand what people thought of my comment and then you guys can say, listen, you know, I defer on some of these technical matters to staff and then, you know, staff will have to be ready to address it the best we can. But like I said, use the staff report as a guide. If we're, we're going to go through every comment as well, we're going to try to pick up where we see there's some good points and we're going to bring them to light. And then we're going to try to pick up where there may not be some good points and we're going to allow them to come to you, but they're not going to be highlighted in any specific way. I I hope that that makes sense and does that, does that guidance, is there anybody that has concern with that overall approach?
Take a look at it. No comment, no staff comment.
Yep. Yep. I'm, I'm. Yeah.
You can do that with any.
Well, no, that's the thing. This is a legitimate letter we got. It didn't identify itself, but if this person was in a butter and they put a name to it, to me, that doesn't change the fact that there weren't facts here. So I I get that there's two issues happening. One is, did someone identify themselves? And then the other is, did they present us with facts? AI is capable of making anything look very well organized, very compelling and and hard-hitting. AI will do anything you ask it to. AI will make up facts for it to deliver you the work product that you want. AI doesn't fact check itself. It's just here to make you happy. So if you say, you could take someone, someone could have taken this letter and say, make it twelve pages and make it more aggressive. Now make it thirteen pages, make it slightly less aggressive, but make some point about air pollution being relevant to the decision. AI will do anything you want and AI will reach and it'll find some code about air pollution and find some way to create a nexus and write it in a way that is so believable, you wouldn't believe it. I'm seeing more and more of this. I don't know, David, if you're seeing any of it. I, it's more just, this isn't like one project. It's more, as we go through, this is the kind of tool that fits what a butter's looking for, which is, this is all over my head and I don't have the time to become an expert in land use or traffic or stormwater, but I do have time to tell AI, review all these documents and make some damning arguments for me and AI will. That doesn't mean it's correct. So that's just, I wanted to take this quiet moment to kind of let you guys know. And on any given project, if you get a bunch of a butters' letters and they look like they're, they're killing it with all their technical abilities, look to the staff report and use that as a guide. If there's not much in there, there's, that means that without going blow by blow, there's a good chance some of those damning arguments might not have been as fact-based as they appear.
One final point. I mean, the applicant's going to have to address that. This creates more work for an applicant.
Yeah.
They're a serious applicant who comes to the big project. In all due respect, I don't think any applicant who is represented by experts can say, I'm not going to review this to see if there's something to it. They're going to have to look at it. So, yes, we're going to, you're going to do, but you're also going to have, really, you got the fallback to say to an applicant, this was put on the record, do you have a response to it?
Yeah.
If they don't, they're not ready and they need time, they go back and they have to debunk it.
Yeah, and I, and I actually agree. I I think no matter what project, and some projects are larger than others and some projects come with a stack of public comments and some projects come with none. We do make it a practice to share public comments with the applicant so they're aware. And as projects come up, if we get these, we're going to make them aware of the applicant. Now, to what degree do we demand that the applicant has to point by point go through and refute everything? That's going to be up to discretion of the board. But again, I mean, staff's job is to try to highlight for you points that we're learning about. The applicant's job would be there to dispute information if they seem legitimate. And if there's something that you believe is legitimate, then at any given point, you can ask the applicant, I need you to dispute this. But, you know, keep in mind, I tried, I want to be respectful of everybody's time. Your time, staff time, legal time and applicant's time. And, you know, to take two hours to debunk this was worth it as a learning exercise. It wouldn't be worth it as a normal matter of practice and procedure. And I even wouldn't want to put that on any applicant to debunk basically something that took two minutes for a person to create, if you want to use that word, create. Took them two minutes to have AI create something that it could take hours to debunk. At a certain point, the the value of time in, timeout has to be kind of relevant. I think the whole world's going to have to learn how we deal with AI and this is one particular niche that I'm seeing that people are picking up on. This is a great use of this tool. Puts you in the spot where you need to be able to identify it and filter it out or filter it how you see fit. Staff are doing the same on our end and I'm sure applicants and developers are figuring out how they can identify these things as well. So David, is this all land with you?
It becomes too easy for an applicant and an engineer to figure out, they're citing the law. And I believe, if you got hired an engineer, they're citing provisions of the code that just don't make sense. I mean, I'm not worried.
Probably use the AI because the book.
Well, hey, no, here's what happens. I I told AI, I I went to AI and I told it to debunk this and it did. But it didn't use great facts either. It debunked it because that's what I told it to do, but it didn't know how to debunk it accurately because sometimes you need a human being that has experience, that's able to understand that small section of code they grabbed from DEM's regs talking about agriculture has nothing to do with a land development project for a non-agricultural parcel. When I tell AI to debunk it, it just reaches for more tangential information. It doesn't know how to bring it back in to relevant information. It only knows how to keep reaching in whatever looks relevant. I mean, there's a good chance that the person that wrote this told it to discredit the project using Coventry regulations. It made up sections out of our code. It just said, hey, this is not consistent with this section. That section doesn't exist. So when I tell AI to, you know, refute it with sections of our code, AI can, it can and will, it'll make me happy. It'll say, great, yeah, I'll debunk that with your Coventry code. It will make up sections of our own code to debunk the argument that someone created with its own made-up sections. And then, you know, if you had AI go back and forth, by the time four rounds in, it'll start talking about why unicorn shouldn't make toast and that's the best argument for why a project should be approved, you know, like it gets less relevant the more you allow it to go and go and go. It's, it's a valuable tool, but it's a tool that a lot of people are starting to learn how to use. But we're kind of in that irresponsible era where no one really knows the responsible way to use it. Let's see. Let me see what else is on my director's report. That was it. The, there's nothing on subdivision and land development regulations off the top of my head. I'm going to have that continue to roll because we are working on things behind the scenes, but I don't want to give any updates. Are there any other questions or thoughts based on what we just talked about? Thank you very much. Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Seven thirty-four. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, aye. Meeting is adjourned.